Our recycle's not over here anymore?
We ended that program. Surprise.
There's two here.
All right, maybe Kathleen moved it, I don't know.
She's related to recycling. She takes two things.
Okay, let's go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have any questions on the establishment of the rules of the meeting document? I know Chris had talked to us briefly about that, but...
Kathleen had asked a question about that and it was answered.
Yeah. Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the consent of that.
And I will second your calling.
Green.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Bill, you're up.
All right, I'm gonna make this short and sweet so maybe just when I'm getting close.
Five minutes, five minutes.
That's okay. I'm gonna become an auctioneer just so I can talk fast. Both documents are kind of intertwined here. I've been working with Chris Moudry on what we feel would be a fair equitable cart placement and contamination policy. And so I'd like you to review the draft. We're not gonna end service with anybody, but you know, we feel that we need to start sending the message out. I've been discussing this with the drivers in a little bit of detail, but when we get a chance, we'll have a meeting where, you know, we found that we can actually train our truck cameras for such things that cart not being out or possibly we're gonna play around with some contamination. I've asked the drivers, let's say for instance, they pull up to my house and I've got yard waste and stuff like that, snap a picture, send it to us. And then that way, when the resident calls, we're prepared, we could say, yes, the driver was there at 7:55, he had yard waste, we'd be more than happy to send you a picture. So we, you know, what we'll have to do is, once we adopt this, then I will have to go out to every entity that has a curbside contract with us and do an addendum to the contract because this will be a change. This policy will then become part of a new contract moving forward because the contamination portion of it is very important. We just had our, and I'm looking at the spreadsheet.
You know, I just wanna ask one question about that. Have we checked with Chris Moudry to make sure that we can on that fourth offense?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you probably didn't. I just wanted to make sure we were gonna recall.
Well, that's better than stopping the service and continuing.
Yeah.
It's a kind of a late switch.
Yeah, because the last thing that I wanna do is create a nightmare for the team where, you know, this address is stopped, this one's now looking up, you know, and for the guys, you know, they're great at what they're doing, but I don't need to block them down on the route and say, okay, wait, the third house on this street I can't pick up because they're in timeout.
That'd be very confusing.
And yeah, yeah, it's just, you know, they wanna go out and run the routes and get home.
So do you want us to approve this today or review it?
Just review it.
Okay.
Review it because...
That's good, 'cause it makes sense.
Yeah, and I probably won't be back for a few weeks because I know next week is the holiday week, so we're just trying to get some things put together on our end.
Bill, before you move on, I have a couple of things on it too. The trash is permitted in the recycling carts, did you mention that? It says right above 2.8 in all caps. I think you mean it to be it's not permitted.
I just said it.
And trash is permitted in the recycling.
Yeah, I'll fix that.
So much for our contamination.
Yeah, yeah, that should spike the number a little bit.
Right, then under your, right under that, you list the website. You type that web address in and it actually doesn't work?
I know, we gotta develop that.
So could you, yeah.
Yeah.
Then again, not to beat a dead horse, but if you go to the single screen portion of the website, it doesn't list plastic and it doesn't list glass. It's now right in the policy, but it's still not right on the website.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get to that.
On the second events, is the cart emptied?
Depends upon how, what's in there. Most of the time, I always use styrofoam as example. There's a block of styrofoam in there, we'll pop that out and then empty the cart, put the styrofoam back in and put the tag. But now, some of the drivers, they're getting to know the residents on those routes and like I said before, they like to hide stuff throughout the cart. So they'll actually take time to try to dig through to make sure there's not any contamination in the bottom. So it just, it depends upon the level of contamination in there.
Can we add, just because you specify that under the first offense and under the third offense, but it's silent on the second offense. On the fourth offense, when you talk about the additional service fee, what amount are you talking about?
Probably $25 again.
So that should be specified under fourth offense.
All right.
What happens to service under the fourth offense as well?
Well, basically, you know, after about four times, you know, they will probably receive the visit or a letter from the environmental compliance officer. And basically, you know, we wanna bring it to their attention that they're continually do this because, number one, it's against our policy, but then it's also gonna impact everyone's rates as well because the more contamination, the more we're gonna be charged for processing. And I, you know, I need to drive the number down instead of up like it has been.
I think you should specify under the fourth offense, what happens to service. And those are all the issues that I had.
But again, it's my understanding, the service just continues, just fine?
Yeah, and if we get, if we get to a point where we just have someone that's not gonna get the message, I'm probably gonna make an appointment with either the service director or the mayor or the trustees and say, look, we've gotta work together on this. This person's just not getting the message or whatever. And, you know, hopefully that will take care of it. But, you know, we are, we are in the process, we did get the grant for outreach awareness that starts July 1st. I have a meeting with the record courier to help us tomorrow. We're gonna hit 'em with print media, social media, email blast, direct mailers. So we're gonna try to do the best we can to get the message across. Then I'm gonna ask all the municipalities, whether it's drop off or curbside, to help me to send the message out on their websites where some of them send out flyers occasionally. And then hopefully, over the course of a year, we're gonna try to space this out so it's a concert, it's not a one and done thing. We space it out so the message is continuous. And then hopefully after that year, we can kind of pick the ball up and keep it going because we just don't want people to think, hey, they're, it's over now, I can go ahead and back to putting the undesirables in there. So that's, that's the goal. We did have the composition analysis done and it was done in May. So what I tried to do is point out some things that were good, some things that I didn't agree with, but, you know, for instance, part of this contamination and outreach and awareness is to make sure people are putting the right items in. So if you look at aluminum cans, we jumped significantly, which is what, we wanna see the things that were actually getting pivoted that are positive go up. So things that are paying well, like aluminum cans went up, steel, we're hoping that that market will go back up. I remember the days when it was $400 a ton.
Oh, wow.
The one and twos were good.
What is the one and two?
Yeah, that's plastic. Your number one is like this. And then your number two would be like your soapy detergent bottles and things like that.
And they need to be rinsed out, right?
Preferably, yes. So the thing that really, there were two, two things that concerned me was, I know that mixed or glass has been the thing that people are, you know, concerned about, and it is in our contract, but you see, we almost had like a four to five percent increase in mixed class. That's going to equate, if that number continues to go up, that may equate with some service fee adjustments because that is a huge negative. The one that I really disputed was the cardboard because I cannot believe the cardboard dropped that much.
Yeah.
Because...
I circled that, I...
Yeah, because, you know, I asked, I ask the drivers all the time, you know, what's it looking like? And I keep hearing cardboard, cardboard, cardboard. Even yesterday, the Ramana driver said, he goes, this time of year, I've never seen this much cardboard before. So I did ask about that. I didn't get a reply yet from our processor, but that is a concern of mine. But the big thing that concerned me was the residue, the trash, that number went up. But I think part of it too, again, and I'm not trying to point fingers at any certain communities, but the drop offs. The drop offs are bad, the multifamilies are atrocious, they're 70 to 80 percent trash. And we're gonna have a conversation with Kent State as well about their level. But I'm also looking at, I may do some experimentation at our drop off outside of our facility. I've been in contact with one of my colleagues down south. They have a little bit different setup, but what they've done is to keep the contamination out, the sliding doors on the side of their containers, they've actually, and this is not what we're gonna do, but they did really kind of crew, they drilled from the inside out and put a bolt there so it only opens about a foot. So if you wanna get that little Tykes toy in there, you can't do it. And then on our lids, you can actually buy locking mechanisms that will allow the lid to open that fart, slide the cardboard in. But then when the driver comes in to dump it, there's a mechanism inside the box that will release the bar, he can dump it and it resets when he sets it back down. So I'm looking at that and before we do anything else, I wanna try it at our own facility first, just to see how it works, see if we can drive down the contamination. But my colleague told me he drove his contamination at the drop offs down to 5%. So that's significant, yeah, so...
Bill, how many drop offs do we have in the county now?
We have 10. We have a total of 57.
Still 10.
Yeah, still 10. We still have 57 containers out there. But little by little, we're getting, you know, some interest, like we're gonna be doing a survey here for Palmyra at the end of the summer. So there's, you know, there's that growing component of getting away from curbs, or getting away from drop off. It just depends upon the community, what the flavor of the community is. But, you know, you know, from, from what these numbers indicate, the, the cost of the drop offs are just gonna continue to go up.
Decision I saw.
Well, that and generally, you know, they're in the center of the community, so, you know, Suffolk Field, that was one of their driving reasons too, because you're up and down, we're up 43, and there you are, you see that right in the center of the community that had that issue. And Garrettsville, same thing, it's right by their service garage. And, you know, people, if they're, they're motivated to get rid of trash, they're, they're gonna do it, so. But, you know, it's just something that we'll devote some time to, you know, and do the best we can.
Does Randolph still have the drop off?
Yes.
Is it still by the church?
No, it's actually, they moved it to the, well, we moved it to the center of town, it's by the ball fields on Randolph Road. I think it's called Warrior Field. Yeah, on Waterloo Road, yeah. Yeah, but, yeah, so that's pretty much it.
Why is the three through seven plastic listed out on here? Is that not contamination?
Well, it's just such a small percentage, there's not a charge for it, but they're not really asking for a lot of it because it's a difficult, it's a, it's difficult items to get rid of.
Why is that in plastic?
That's like, you know, your flower pots, things like that, the baskets, those, oh God.
What are the detergents?
That's number two.
Okay.
That's number two, yeah. But the three through seven plastics were an item that were shipped pretty heavily overseas. We used to do that when we ran our MRF, we would just bundle them up. You wouldn't get much, we were probably at the most getting a penny a pound, but at least it was diversion. But then that market kind of dried up and it's drying up. I mean, even, even now that China has said no more, Southeast Asia is getting away from accepting the miscellaneous plastics because, you know, they, they're getting plastic bags and they're getting everything that they don't want in there, so. But fortunately for us, all of our stuff is still shipped and processed here domestically.
So what is the status of the three through seven? Like, I know that you've taken it out of our policy.
Yeah.
So they'll still take it?
They'll take it, but they're trying to get away from it. It's just, they don't have a, they don't have a market for it. And they don't wanna, they don't wanna bail it and store it because of that, just that costs them more money. But overall, you're starting to see, some of these companies are starting to get away from those types of plastics, the big pushes to make their product into something that can be recycled. And I'll have to ask, I, I don't think they're landfilling it, I think it might be going over to a company over in Medina which then reduces it for kiln fuel, cement kiln. We looked at it one time, but they wanted us to take all of our stuff and cut it down to a certain size, and I said, I'm not buying more equipment to fix the problem. And that's when we still had our MRF, and then once we closed our MRF, that problem went away for us.
So they'll take it, you're just not sure?
Yeah, I'm not sure where, where it goes. I can, I can email Eric and find out.
Yeah, one, the one item that fits in there that I think's a big one, and it is the coffee, the Keurig coffee pods are a five or a seven? That's like a big...
You mean the actual coffee pot?
No, the...
Little cups?
The little, yeah, cake cups.
Oh, I've never recycled those.
Yeah.
Well, places that take fives are sevens.
They do recycle them?
Yeah.
Oh.
Pull them apart, so...
I would think that those grounds in there would...
You'd have to pull them apart.
I never knew that.
I'll fight off from Eric.
Great, thanks.
Sure. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day, everyone.
Anything else?
I made a motion to adjourn. Go calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All ready for done, this goes. Good morning.
I'm on vacation. I haven't yet.
No, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Doug, could you be like, pet?
I am not, I'm Doug Brown from Moorestown, Wisconsin.
I'm glad you thought of it.
I know, it's like...
Thank you, my pleasure. Quick overview of why we're here, we just switched the market here for the medical drug and dental plans for county employee dependents. It's been our privilege to work with Flourish County for a number of years, and this is every three year cycle where we take up, plan out the bid to make sure that you've got the most competent arrangement of what we're finding what is going to be considered, et cetera. So today, what we're doing is going through the results of that marketing. I wanna compare and contrast to get, as usual, you've got an apple and an orange and a banana on some of these things. So I'm trying to draw it together as best I can for you to try to create the parallels of what makes one better than another and the things that might be a little murky and some, et cetera. So I know I've got till about 10 o'clock, right?
Yep.
Okay, we should be able to do it. First, segments of this, pages two and three are just kind of the overviews. I think page three is interesting for you from the standpoint that will tell you who responded to the RPA's. On the medical and the drugs, Medical Mutual of Ohio is your incumbent, United Healthcare presented the proposal. Aetna presented the proposal, however, we ultimately deemed to be incomplete, it was missing a lot of pieces that would make it incomparable. Even though they're a good carrier, it just wasn't a complete bid. And then SEPCO, which is county employee, or county commissioner consortium in Ohio, they did, for its will. The dental, on the other hand, is an employee paying benefit, currently that is with Delta Dental, so they certainly submitted a proposal. And then these other carriers, Aetna, Hampton, Humana, MetLife, Medical Mutual, Ohio, show characteristic of those. First and foremost, I think what's helpful, which is always of interest to us, is how are you running? And so if you look at page four, you'll see how we see as your claims over a 24 month period, so rolling 12 over rolling 12 through the months of April. If you focus in on your claim costs columns, per employee per month, the 942 for the most current 12, that's taking your medical claims, your drug claims and your, and the reductions for claims over the stop loss level. The 942, then you take it down to the prior rolling 12 of 1,177, so you're running well. 12 months over 12 months at this point in time, and it's self-funding, every month is a new story. So you've had some good months. You'll notice the, the worst months you've had were back in May and June 17. Certainly, we had some big months, and that can just as easily happen in May of 19, et cetera. But at the moment, at a snapshot basis, you're looking pretty good, so you're running well. And that comes into play in our minds as to what do we think a realistic claim projection is for 2020? And I'll admit, we're doing it a little early here in June, and we will continue to update that for you, but we're gonna show you what we think that's gonna fall right now compared with the carrier slot.
Okay.
With page five, is just focusing on your incumbent, your Medical Mutual. The fixed cost items, assuming 838 covered employees where they have the administrative fee that you pay them to process your claims and create your booklets and take claim calls from your employees, et cetera. That, they're asking to start off at a 2.8% increase. And they are also, interestingly, going forward, this is an area that I think we can push back on, they want that to go up 3% in 2021 and then another 3% in 2022. So that's a little star we wanna put out there.
Doug does think he can negotiate that down.
Yeah, I face, it's probably, I should preface all this saying, we have not gone back to any money at this point. These are the results that went through.
So that's Med Mutual that wants?
Right.
And it's the 3%?
In the 3% for 2020? Yeah, just in the...
2.8% for 2020. Stop loss is one that has been, it's a, it's a frustrating element, but it's very valuable. It's where you have an individual claim that hits a low and then the area picks up. So in your case, you have $175,000 specific stop loss level, so any...
We have, we have three people in that stop loss area right now, currently.
Can we write on this, or is this...
That's yours.
Okay.
And then we have a total group umbrella, if you will, 125% expected paid claims, let's look at the 125, I mean, we tried to spell it out a little bit more in the smaller print below. So this is a coverage that tends to go up in that neighborhood of 15 to 20% every year because you tend to keep that stop loss level the same, 175, and claim costs continue to go up. Now, the best alternative to that is competition, nobody really knocked them out of that number. But at the same time, from a going back perspective, this is one that we can consider as well as possibly taking it to a higher level, and we'll get to that in just a minute. Expected claims, this is where you have run better, so Medical Mutual, if you look at the current column, this is taking your current rate levels and where they would have expected your claims to be, and you're, let's go on page five.
Okay.
Under the current column, of 11 million, 820, that is what, if you use their rate factors, would have been the expected claims this year. And we, we've run better than that. But going forward, their, their calculation is 11 million, 505.
Decreased.
So it's a decrease. So overall, it is a, if you look at just their rate factors alone, it's a decrease overall for Flourish County going into 2020. Now, Medical Mutual will continue to give you a $20,000 wellness fund each year in 2020, 2021, 2022. They've also offered a $30,000 discount on your administrative fees if you move a dental to them, however, we'll, we'll show you on a paper table, I'm sure that's such a great, great option. We're not necessarily here today to talk about alternate stop loss levels, but whether that 175 is the right number, going up to something higher. But this gives you an idea of what their reductions would be in cost if you were to take on more risk and how many folks you could absorb. So if you went from 175,000 to 200,000, you'd save $107,000, which means you could absorb four people from an extra 25,000, or more than four before, that was a bad idea. If you're gonna go up to 225, SN had a $50,000 exposure to the county, 217,000 savings, you could absorb five, five million or so. So it's one of those, we'll worry about that probably six, eight, nine weeks from now because this is gonna need to emerge a little more. Now, if you go to page six, before we get into the market, you wouldn't, you wouldn't seen us do this, but you folks have, where we look at how Medical Mutual rates your, your future claims and we realize that they tend to do it with a lot more inflationary trend than we would use. So if you just look at how they approach it, Medical Mutual, number one, they're just using a 12 month period. They're also using composite annual trend between medical and drug of 10.9%. From our perspective, as that be the way it works in the market, we see in self-funded cases, it's a 5% trend for medical and about a 10% trend for drug. So we look at that more of a composite annual trend at seven. And if you consider what your claims look like on page four, you're trending down. So you've got a negative case trend at the moment. So we're pretty comfortable saying seven's better than 10. And we might even be able to say five better than seven. But you can't get too excited about a self-funded case at a point in time because it can turn south on you 60 days later. But at any rate, if you use our approach, which would be not only to reduce the trend to seven, but then use two years of claims and blend them three to one to the current 12 and one to the prior 12, our claim pick is slightly lower. So it's slightly lower than Medical Mutual, which you have seen in the past as well. So ours is not as far different as theirs because that 12 month period we're picking up has a lot of claimed months. It's a little closer than it usually is, but I think our approach, from an actuarial standpoint, makes more sense if you spread it out over more time. So we would, we would say, you have the WTW approach and you've got the MMO approach, and we're within $70,000. So before we get into the actual numbers of the proposals, the characteristics of the proposals, probably worth spending a second on. You have a self-funded plan, that would be the first column. SEPCO is a consortium. So right out of the gate, is there a consortium with your current approach? No, there is, yes, with SEPCO. How many members are in your current approach? Well, you're the only member in your freestanding approach. There are 35 counties apparently in the SEPCO consortium. Membership commitment, you are a month to month commitment to your incumbent carriers, you can terminate any one of them at a 30 day notice. With SEPCO or a consortium like a SEPCO, you'd have a three year commitment. Consortions need to do that because they can't let the good ones suddenly say, hey, I'm having a good year, I'm getting out of here. They gotta kind of keep them in. So there's a hook. And then if you say, all right, I wanna get out of here early, early termination penalties, you certainly don't have that with your self-funded approach, you can get out again with 30 days notice, assuming you've got something lined up to replace it. And the penalties for SEPCO would be tied to a snapshot of how you would actually run within the consortium. So the monies that you put in versus what came out, you may show a surplus in a given, a given year, or you may show a deficit. If you have a deficit, they'll collect it. If you terminate early and you have been putting monies into the pot for reserve runoff claims, you will now be, those will go away and you will pay your actual runoff claims. So there are the two financial props to keep you there. But it does though, it takes away a lot of your flexibility in terms of wanting to go some other direction. The underwriters on these two proposals, a self-funded, we're really gonna focus today on Medical Mutual and United Healthcare. United Healthcare has its own... United Healthcare has its own wholly-owned third-party administrator called United Medical Resources. So WHC and UMR, it's more of the same. Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield underwrites the SEPCO program. The funding approach for yours is straight self-funded. They talked about how you've got $175,000 out of Madison and Agri umbrella. That's specific to Portage County. SEPCO is a self-funded pool behind a curtain, if you will. And they will charge member counties a set rate that looks like a premium rate. And that's what some smaller counties like because there's no volatility. There's a set single rate, set two-party rate, family rate, et cetera. And it goes into the pot, copays claims, and you don't worry about fluctuations in claims. And that's one of the attractions of a consortium, particularly if you're a smaller entity. Future rating on page eight, for Portage County, it's going to be based exclusively on your own experience. And SEPCO, they will blend your experience with the others, but it'll be predominantly Portage County data that they would use because you're going to be a larger type client in there if you were to join them.
We'd be the largest one. Wouldn't we be the largest?
I can't answer that. I don't know that.
That's how, how it was in previous.
I think we'd still be.
You would certainly be a larger one, put that way. Plan design flexibility, yes, you have that with your current self-funded plans over at Medical Mutual or United Healthcare. You can set your plan design, as many options as you like. With SEPCO, you're limited to what they offer. They like to keep a cookie cutter. You pick plan A, B, C, or D, you can put a couple of them in there, you tie a drug plan onto it and there you go. Flexibility in claim administration and decisions, this is where you currently have, as plan sponsor, the authority to make decisions that might be in your mind correct based on extenuating circumstances. If you have that type of a scenario where you think, oh, this really, there's more to the story and I think SEPCO's taken a hard line, you have no input on that. That's SEPCO call. Again, the membership commitment, month-to-month for your current program, your current program three years for the consortium. Oh, I gotta say, double good phone, I'm sorry. Cutting and pasting, so you skip down to pricing and quality tools. The Medical Mutual program has a My Health Plan where you can go out as an employee or a member of the plan and you can price out different providers and you can quality assessments of providers, you can do a health risk assessment online, there's a whole myriad of things that you can do. United Healthcare has a similar one called myhealthcom. SEPCO promotes the Castlight platform, which is very similar as well. You can find providers, you can price out providers, quality ratings of providers, et cetera. So that's comparable.
When you say it's very similar, so is, do they use the same UHC, UMR, or it's different ones?
They have different ones, but they do the same.
Now, if you were, if you, this becomes more important, a little sidebar, if you were having to say a high deductible health plan with a big deductible, somebody's making a buying choice on an MRI, is a typical example. You can get an MRI that's going to be $3,000 or you can find one that might be $900. And if you have a high deductible health plan, that becomes material to you as the user. And this is what these types of tool are designed to help guide someone through. So you've got an elective test like that. You can step back and say, okay, I want to save a little money and I want to make sure I got quality where I'm going. So you'll get pricing and quality ratings both ways. So it measures out pretty similarly. From an employee concierge basis, SEPCO has Health Advocate, which is a place that someone can go and call and say, I have a claim problem, I'm having trouble finding a physician. Got Susan.
She's thinner.
Come to Susan. So I saw this, anyway, I put Susan's name in there, but basically that's, you have, you have that. So, I mean, I wanted to start because we're going to talk first about the self-funded options and then we'll overlay what the SEPCO looks like. All right, page nine. Our current and MMO renewals, you've just seen previously. So this is where they have the current administration, stop loss costs, fixed costs, and what their request is going to be for 2020 and what impact that would be on their rates. The third column is where we simply put the Willis Towers claim pick in there, the 11463. So over kind of the bases. United Healthcare and UMR have a approach where it was $387,000 is a admin number through UMR, which is the TPA owned by United Healthcare. Stop loss with, I'm sorry, with United Healthcare, 1,000, $1,066,000. So the total cost, the total fixed costs are very comparable. At this point though, United would say, hey, we have another way of doing this. Or we could give you a $31 per employee per month credit, reduce it if United keeps the bulk of the prescription rebates. So we'll give you a hard reduction and then we're going to take all the rebates on the other side. So that starts to get just a little bit murky. We'll come back to that in a minute. The interesting part here though, is that United then had a claim pick of 11 million and 296,000. This is where this exercise gets a little judgment call because you can put a number in there, you can put a number in there, you can put a number in there, and it comes down to, okay, I can say anything, how am I going to back it up? And we'll show that in just a moment, but let's, let's just talk about the fact that United's not including any vision or hearing, which you have included in their health plan. So all told here, it measures up in a way that looks like some savings. However, it's not, it's missing some pieces and parts. Good news though, is United has a two-year rate guarantee under administration and the third-year increase is limited to 2.2. So they're a leg up on Medical Mutual and Agri. I'm in the gray box now.
Okay, I was going to say, you're in the gray, aren't you? Okay.
They've given us a rate guarantee on the vision admin increase, but they never gave us the admin rate. That's a great, that's a great deal. They did not specify any wellness credits, so where are you getting 20,000 with Medical Mutual each year? They did not provide that. And then the technology implementation credits, this is where some carriers will give you monies to offset the pain, if you will, converting to another carrier. So the only thing offered by Medical Mutual was the $30,000 if you buy dental from them. There was nothing offered by United Healthcare. The stop loss quotes from all fronts, Medical Mutual and United are not firm yet. They would like claims through September, which we're going to say that's too far out. What we're going to want to do is have these folks commit one way or the other sooner. And if they say, I want May claims and maybe even June claims, I don't think that's on the reason. And that's, that's probably worth giving them that to firm. So at any rate, they have, you have the option with United to take that reduction, which is worth about 300,000 off of that 387. That's quite a swing. So I just wondered if we could say, all right, that's fine, then they, then they get to keep all the rebates, which they're estimated to be about, well, and I shouldn't say all of them, most of the rebates, which they're estimating 400,000. The problem is, we don't know how they got the 400,000. So this is part of that murky part.
We did get our rebates though.
You do. You do. And we're going to, we're going to talk about those in one second. So if you go to page 10, we'll show you how SEPCO wind up. So again, SEPCO is going to be more of a fully insured type rate over on the right, you're sitting 81349 down to the 2440. Those are those set rates that they will charge you. Meanwhile, the pool itself is self-funded behind a curtain. So this is what you would charge, you would be charged. They also provide a division. They don't have a hearing benefit.
They don't?
So when you look at their equivalents and you compare them to either one of our scenarios for 2019, or 2020, the Medical Mutual accrual or the Medical Mutual with Willis Tower and Watson accrual, they are higher. So the differential here is really, I mean, you can be down about 185,000 and go up 187, so that's about 360,000 or more of a differential. So right out of the gate, it's kind of like, well, it doesn't give us a compelling reason to say, wow, this is where we want to go. And so what happens then if we want to look at the plan designs on SEPCO? So if you go to page 11, as I mentioned before, you have set plans. You have to pick from there. So what we're showing you here on the right side, your page 11, the SEPCO offer, this is closest matchup to what you have.
Tool that we currently have.
So anything in red is step back, anything in green is an improvement. So the improvements you'll see in the prescription drug copays, but you'll see a slight difference here in the benefit design where you've got an 80% benefit instead of 90, copays have gone up. Now, in and of itself, those are not outrageous copays, but it represents a change to what you had. So it's slightly leaner. So we look at this and we think, okay, financially, it's not a wow moment.
It's less for more.
Plan design-wise, it's not a wow moment. So our thought is, okay, we probably ought to focus more so on what you have and what United has and maybe we're, you know, you look at United, it's kind of like, I don't see a real wow moment with them either.
Yeah.
To change a carrier that for all intents and purposes, from a service perspective, I think is.
Changing a carrier is huge for everybody involved.
And I like the flexibility. I mean, I think that's important.
It is.
It's very. We're not offering that with United, right?
I put the flexibility, not as much because they have a third-party administrator, you know, as well. So there's another step with them, not as many steps as with SEPCO, but there is another step. It's not the direct relationship that.
And thank you. I glossed over that. I should spend a second on that.
I just wanted to.
Blowing through that comparison so quickly. The way you were set up with Medical Mutual at the moment, they pay your claims and they provide your stop loss. So if you get a large claim that exceeds 175,000, which you have had and you have a couple already, they pick up right away, 175, Medical Mutual steps in and pays. With UMR as a TPA and United as a reinsurer, there's a reimbursement mechanism here, which means that you have to front a large claim and then you get reimbursed. And they say, well, it's very, it's very accelerated. Well, that's great. However, if you're talking about a $200,000 claim payment on somebody and you're $25,000 over 175, that kind of gets lost in the scheme of things in an $11 million claim fund. But if you get one of those premature babies, suddenly delivers a bill to a plan of 800,000 or 900,000, you'll notice those. You'll see that on a Friday.
Well, I'll get a phone call Friday.
You'll be getting a phone call.
Yes.
Now, the good news is, it'll get reimbursed, but the question is how long? So if you were.
It's cash out of.
So I mean, picture yourself in their position, if you were the Portage County Reinsurance Board and somebody said, here's this $800,000 claim, they're going to ask some questions and they're going to want to make sure that that was a covered person, they're going to make sure of the cover of expense.
That, that all the steps were taken to avoid it, you know, to begin with, those kind of things.
So I, I expect that with United owning UMR and all, that it would be quicker than your typical TPA and say a Sun Life type reinsurance arrangement, but it's still a delay. And it's still, they can say it's accelerated, but they don't say it's immediate. Your current one is immediate. So that's an advantage. Some of the other qualitative items here that I want to show you on pages 12 and 13, and we always look at how do these other carriers compare to the network of providers that your folks are using? So this is a, we've broken this out by inpatient, outpatient, professional, which is physician, and then overall. So for inpatient, we've got 23 different providers. In this case, each one of these folks have those providers, inpatient hospitals. So there's no hospital disruption, see 100%, all the claimers are 100%. You get into the outpatient, there were 93 outpatient settings. These are how they fare, 89 for Medical Mutual, 87, 91 for United. So they're very high 90%. Number of claims, same thing. Flow that through then to the professional side. All told, when you roll up the networks in the lower right-hand corner, each one of these networks would measure up very well. So your folks, if we changed any one of these, you would not have people saying, you just gouged all my doctors' hospitals. Not 100% match, but each one's north of 98%, pretty strong. The discount side of this thing, and this is where I'm going to drag you through a little technical, but I apologize in advance, but this is, this is where, when we look at this, we get, we start scratching our heads a little bit. Medical Mutual is the top. We measured it by inpatient, outpatient, professional. They are estimating that their discount should be about 53%.
And just so that everybody understands what the discount means, is if you go to the doctor and they charge an $85 fee for a visit, based on their contract with Medical Mutual, it would be reduced by Medical Mutual's reduction price or if they had insurance with United, then they have a different contracted price. So that's what the reduced, reduction means. That's what that discount is, is their contracted discount through the, with the facility.
So in essence, we're just isolating these three areas to $17 million, $17,237,000 of allowable. And how much would each of these carriers allow? So then a discount is actually the allowed subtracted from the charge. So it's now, it should be one minus that, that just, to get to the discount amount. So the point is, MMO is projecting 53%, which is consistent with reports that they've brought to you showing actuals. So that's, we're, we're not surprised to see that. United Healthcare is reporting 55, and again, this is where any one of us could throw a number out there and then how do we include it? I would not expect United to be that high, just based on what I do for a living, but that's what they reported. And I look at that and think, okay, if that's 55%, then I go back to page nine, then the claim pick for United Healthcare should be something in the neighborhood of about $350,000 less. And it's just by taking that differential discounts off of $17 million, a two-point differential on $17 million, it's about $350,000, theoretically ought to be there now. It's not, which means that that's, that's the triggering mechanism of their stop loss. They're expected, they don't put 25% on that. So I would think that if it's really 55, that should be more aggressive and it's not. So I look at 55 and I go.
So that's questionable.
Yeah, it's not. And, and they've got nothing at risk there, so they can say it. Finishing out the thought, SEPCO, even though they're fully insured theoretically, we have asked them in the past and they've refused to reprice, now they are repricing, but they're doing so on some pretty wow discounts of 59%. But three years ago, they were 61. So that begs the question, if they're that big, why is their premium that much higher? When you look at this, so this is kind of a, this is kind of a reality check, if anything else. Then you go to the page 14, you say, okay, who's going to put what at risk on these? The Medical Mutual grid is a little complicated, but they're saying that if you're anywhere between anything less than 55% discounts, they're going to pay you money back. And that's how you agree with this. So you could fall between 45 and 55. So they'll put something at risk. So if they don't hit it, they'll pay you. So 2% on the 423,000 below, they would put $8,000 off. So is that a big penalty to them? Probably not. But if you start getting down lower in their 52%, 6%, now they're paying 25,000. So they've got to see if they're going, if they're willing to put something on the table to back it up. So Medical Mutual is consistent with what you have today. United has this net cost guarantee. They decided in their approach, and it's got some merit, but they don't want to necessarily do a discount argument because this one, you're witnessing a discount argument, whether it's a 55 or 53. Their feeling is, we're going to go to a net cost, we're going to guarantee a net cost for your client. Okay, so how does that work? So any one of the net costs for them that falls into any one of these ranges, they will put on the upper, well, on the lower half, what they would pay you if it comes in lower. Actually, I'm sorry, this is where I thought that was higher, if their net cost ends up higher, you lose on it, they will pay you something. Above the gray bar is if you have a very good year and your costs are lower than expected, you woe them money. It's a two-way. It's a two-way street, yeah. So they'll, they'll say if your costs improve very, if you get really good per head costs, that's due to their medical management, so therefore you will owe some money for helping get you in. Okay, whatever. But here's where I get, I get perplexed because I go back to that page nine, which 11 million, 290 something. And that comes out to a. And that comes out to a net cost per employee from Lusco, thousand one hundred and twenty-three. And I think, okay, that's gotta have some, I kicked this around with my colleague, that's gotta have some validity, because that's tied to stop loss. But I look at this, and they use their starting point as one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight. Three percent higher than eleven twenty-three. And then they've got this, this no-risk corridor, which says they have to be three plus five percent, eight percent worse than they're gonna pick, before they would pay you anything. Makes it a pretty safe bet, that we can kind of say it and probably not have to pay for it. I see, so I think, I look at that, I think if you, if eleven fifty-eight's your number, then that's another three hundred fifty thousand to the eleven million, two ninety-three. Which means MMO would be a little bit under, which is what I would have expected anyway. So I've been struggling with this one, because that's the only form of guarantee that they've got, where they would come back and say, I'll pay something if I'm wrong. And therefore, I look back and I think, okay, what, the, the one thing in here that United's got going is it could take thirty-one dollars per employee from Lusco for your admin rate and keep the bulk of the discounts to the rebates.
Yeah.
Is it worth changing a carrier for shifting dollars? I, I don't personally think it is.
That there's no guarantee.
Exactly. Last thing, I'll, I'll hit you up on it for the healthcare, so page fifteen, this is looking at how did the repricing on the drugs go? So we have average wholesale price, a common six point three million dollars. Ingredient costs of each of the carriers is listed. SEPCO went ahead and did it, which I thought was commendable. Dispensing fees, although that, SEPCO had a separate number, which nobody else had. So when you get to a gross cost level, Medical Mutual is, is stronger there. This is where the rebates come into play. So Medical Mutual's got about two hundred eighty-five thousand projected in rebates, which are, which are solid. They projected it, and we saw how they did it. United's got four hundred thousand dollars. We are awaiting how they got there. We'd like to see that.
SEPCO.
At the same, yeah, SEPCO, eight hundred forty grand. Let's do that one. Wow.
But they, they keep it because they are fully funded.
They're gonna keep it. That didn't translate into a lower SEPCO cost.
No, they keep their own rebates because they're their own group.
SEPCO shows you a fifty-nine percent medical discount, we've got all of this great looks over here, and yet their fully insured projections higher.
So far, it doesn't seem like SEPCO would be of our best interest.
It's not all.
I, I don't think it is.
How is SEPCO managed? I mean, how is SEPCO managed? Is it a private firm that oversees their funds, or is it members from each county that administer?
There's a County Commissioner Association of Ohio, which is a, an organization that I can't tell you exactly. Right, makeup, but it is, uh, serving the counties of Ohio. There's a property and casualty version of that as well, which is called.
Of course, of course.
Yeah.
So they provide this, this benefit for member counties of the eighty-eight counties in Ohio. What they use is Aon as an actuary on the side, they use Anthem as the, as the healthcare. So they separate for all the member counties through Aon's work and then Anthem's.
But it is, is CCAO employees making the decisions?
I think they have a member there on their team that is in charge of.
I just curious, it'd be nice to talk to them about why they aren't attractive for future.
We, we did talk to them. Sabrina, yeah, they came and met with us and we went over some things that, about why they really weren't beneficial to us.
Yeah, and, and I know they had someone, one of my colleagues called me to try to sway us to look at SEPCO again, but like I said, when you listen to everything, it does not seem like it would be beneficial for us. And we're pretty, I mean, I think, a pretty healthy group, and if we get put in a mix with.
And, and SEPCO is good for what, what they do with the smaller counties, it's great for them, which just, we do not fall under that category.
I mean, cost-wise, they're.
It's a question if they're interested in starting a larger county consortium, have an A and a B, that would be more attractive then, but that's something that the commissioners are gonna have to push them to.
Well, you're still locked in, though, you lose that N and then.
But do they just take?
Responsibility on our medical plan.
Can you, can you go just a prescription?
Control of your own medical plan.
No, I get that, but I'm saying, it depends on how you organize the, the group.
Consortium.
And who's, who's on the board making the decisions? If you have a good say in that board, then.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I, like I said.
I'm not advocating for them right now, I'm just curious, because it does seem like some of the larger counties could do even better pulling together. Why that hasn't come though, because the SEPCO structure isn't conducive to the larger counties, but there should be a way to establish that.
So the last point, clearly, on this, on this page is, and you look over the United column, four hundred thousand in rebates. Again, we don't know how they got them, but if you were to take the thirty-one dollar reduction, that four oh nine would go down considerably. So you're trading dollars off. It'd be probably a hundred thousand ahead net-net, but again, I still don't know the.
Thirty-one dollars is what they give per, um, person in the plan?
Per covered employee.
Yeah, okay, per month, okay.
And so you can bring your fixed cost down noticeably, and they get to keep the bulk down, and fifty percent or more of those rebates. If you live, we don't know how much they really are. So again, then our feeling is, it's just a great option to have. County had to lead the way, if you wanted to go to United. I'm just not sure that even, either one of those segments is an alternative way to have, quite honestly. So I think when it's all said and done, I, as I mentioned earlier, we've not gone back to any one of the certain pencils. I think there's, there's potential with your incumbent in the area of the admin stop-loss rebates, and admin being second, third year of the year. Even though you would say, okay, we're going into a three-year arrangement with Medical Mutual, that's only a rate guarantee. That's not a marriage like a SEPCO. You can get out, want to come on, with Medical Mutual. Now, there are some other drug options that Medical Mutual would like the chance to talk about. So if we progress to the point of staying with them, then there are some utilization management programs that are probably worth talking about with, with Medical Mutual. They are, they are estimating that if you put all of theirs in, it would be two hundred sixty thousand dollars of reductions. But they do include our things that I know folks have not always been crazy about, and that's in the coverage management program and the bulletproof laws, step therapy. That's where you need to try this drug first before you can do that. And that tends to not be a real popular one among people. But there are other things that they can do with, uh, home delivery incentives, rational meds, and a lot of areas, but I won't, I won't talk about those today, and so we'll talk about it if you decide to go ahead and have.
Well, you know, back to SEPCO, one of the other things with that is, because there was Blue Cross Anthem, that they didn't cover some of our hos- local hospitals, and I hear that's always been a big thing. You know, because a lot of people go to UAH, and then we have a lot that go to Akron. And I remember looking it up, and they didn't cover all of them. And I just remember in the years past, when we've done these reviews, that's been so important.
And as it stands, based on the ones that folks have used in Lusco at once, they're all, they're all in. But, you know, it would be certainly about as planned, don't it, as a hundred percent across the state.
Yeah.
So that's the medical side of it. I, I know I'm spending my time here a little bit, let me talk about the dental quickly here for you. You go to page sixteen, you've been with Delta Dental now for four years. Your loss ratios for them have started in the low eighty percents, that's when you divide claims by premiums. And they typically would like to be in the mid to eighty-six, eighty-seven percent loss ratio to break even, or make the profit margins or whatnot. So as you can see here, these are two trailing twelve periods. The loss ratio, right, about the middle column in each of the last two twelve-month periods is eking up to the high eighties. So it's eighty-eight point four percent here, and the most current twelve, and then another eighty-seven point six in the prior twelve. It's getting a little higher than I think they're comfortable with. They did hold a rate for you a year ago, when typically.
We're in our fifth year with the same rate.
So we haven't changed rates in five years with them, which is pretty good. So if you go to page seventeen, they are asking for a bump. And they're giving you two options at this point, each of which being effective on one one-twenty. You can go with a one-year rate, and that would be the lower increase of the two, one point seven five percent. And since employees will be paying those costs, you can see, say, for a family, go from ninety-one dollars and thirty cents to ninety-two, sixty. So they're a dollar sixty a month. But then they're also offering you a two-year rate lock-in, which would be a three-year, or a three percent increase for those two years. We have not gone back to Delta at all about this, and they know they're, they're in competition. They have no idea what the odds look like. So there's, there's a genuine.
I would be interested in asking them about a rate for a three-year, uh, price, just so that it would stay.
Yes.
Typically, how they'll do it, any other carrier, all carriers will give you maybe a two-year rate and a cap in the last year. But that's, that's true, that's an approach that we can take.
And they also have some stick competition, which is another leveling.
Right. That competition, if you wanna look at page eighteen, and I apologize for the, the small text, but each one, we decided to leave them all in there. The Aetna, Humana, Anthem, MMO, everyone. So you'll see from a cost standpoint, and assuming that three point nine percent increase, because most of these folks have all quoted two years down below. The ones that stand out as saving some, some money right out of the gate would be Anthem. Ooh, that looks like a great rate. Even Humana is that close to what you're paying currently. MetLife, Medical Mutual, MetLife and Anthem are not that great an option. MMO is slightly under, and I'll tell you that here is how these differ. And it's, and the green is what's significant to me. If you look under the Delta Dental, if you use that narrower network of the Delta Dental, there is no deductible. So the green is zero on a PPO, no deductible. All of the other carriers, the exception of Medical Mutual, have the deductible on all services. So if you move to one of those others, would be a setback for folks that are actually using the PPO network with Delta. Medical Mutual, on the other hand, so we'll take the deductible off on everybody. That's, that's, that's an attractive, um, look. Everyone else matched up fairly well. Anthem's got a type B under space maintainers, but we, we feel like the plan designs are fairly comparable. But you look at the guarantees down below, Aetna was two years, a five percent cap on the third year. No rate cap for MetLife, five percent third year at MMO. So I think a third year is probably, if a cap would be something we could look at with Delta, I think they'd be open to something like that. So you think, wow, you know, we got Aetna, but you need MMO. And geez, MMO, we could get a thirty thousand dollar reduction in our admin if we moved it to Lusco there. But this is where I think we, we start to lose some interest in those folks. You go to page nineteen, this is the disruption, again, for what dentists your folks have been using. So the overall Delta network, they've been using dentists, a number of providers, three hundred nineteen, two hundred ninety-nine are the Delta network. Hundred seventy-seven of them are in that tier one, that PPO narrower network. So if you flow that over to ninety-three percent of the dentists are in the Del- in the Delta network, fifty-five point five percent are in the tier one. So what that means is that nobody is using a Delta dentist gets balanced bill, because dentists are their own business people and can charge basically whatever they want. So that's why you see ninety-eight percent usually on the Delta network, because the dentist says, it might charge us four, I can charge whatever I want, I'm not gonna reduce my fee to join your network. So you see the others in the fifties and the sixties, because dentists are gonna say no.
So there's no contract between the dentist and Medical Mutual or whatever?
There's a, there is a contract between the dentist stop at a same Delta Dental, is what you mean.
Okay, yes, yes.
If I'm a non-network dentist.
Okay.
So what suddenly stands out to us is that you're going to have a Delta dentist ninety, ninety-four percent of the time, ninety-seven percent of the visits, and ninety-eight percent of the doctors. If you're using their PPO network, it's fifty-five percent of the dentists, sixty percent of the visits and fifty-five percent of the doctors, of the dollars. So you look down and you see the ones that stand out in red, and one is Medical Mutual, where you're going to have fifty-five percent of the dollars, fifty-five percent of the dentists. Therefore, forty-five percent of the dentists are out of network, so the balance billing is gonna be there.
So you're gonna, that's a pain to go to the dentist and get your invoice and send it in for reimbursement, you know, having to do all that billing yourself, that's.
Anthem is a little bit better at sixty-seven, but not quite as good as Delta and, and Aetna has that deductible on all services. They piece the plan design together and the network, and, and our eyes is, this is, there's not a compelling reason to change a dental carrier here either. It looks as if Delta could be negotiated with, but they seem to have a very solid program in there. Nonetheless, we've identified the dentists down at the bottom that would fall out. Those are the ones that are not in the Delta network. How many claimants have gone there, and how many charges were submitted? And whether they're, or not they are covered in the other networks. So you can see that Anthem has four of these, as does MetLife. Medical Mutual, I only got one, Anthem, I only got two. So it's not, these are the types of dentists that are good dentists, and maybe this is how you can conclude, they, yeah, they don't have.
They don't take any.
They don't have patient problem. You got a steady flow of patients, they don't need to play along with an insurance carrier. So it's not like you're gonna pick up ground on these twenty dentists, twenty more than a carrier. I think from a plan design standpoint and, and, and network utilization standpoint, Delta's still a pretty strong player here.
So the last, uh, matters in the network only means an extra administrative burden for our employees? Or is it also an increased cost for our employees?
Which page are you talking?
Nineteen.
It would be potential increased cost to them.
That's what I thought.
If they use a non-network dentist, balance billing would occur.
Right. And it's not just the pain of that billing, it's also more money.
Correct, yes, they can say, okay, you know, your dentist is gonna pay this, but we wanna charge an extra thirty-five dollars for this service, and we're allowed to do that.
Okay.
Overall, in your experience, does Delta deal with more dentists per area? Or is it just they're dealing with a different group, and because our people have to go to those dentists, we've moved to them? Whereas Medical Mutual has an equal number of dentists in our area, our people just don't use them because they're not covered under Dental?
I don't have that answer.
I think, from my experience, I think Delta is the largest, one of the largest carriers.
I would agree with you.
So if you, yeah, if you go to your dentist, you know, ninety-nine times nine percent, they are gonna accept Delta, whereas they may not accept some of the others.
You'll see.
And if they don't accept Delta, it's because they don't accept any dental insurance usually, but.
And you'll see Medical Mutual expand, I'll be straight with you, but they, they have finally an arrangement with Superior now. They're, they're gonna start using their network as well.
Medical Mutual.
Medical Mutual has.
I think unless they had dental until I saw this. They probably will grow.
It, it will grow, but I, I can't tell you exactly that that's, you know, Delta's a big, big network.
Do you all have any questions? Do you have any, um, ideas of what you would like for the next step to be? Would you like that to go back and maybe reduce the admin fee or negotiate with, with Medical Mutual on the medical? And with Delta Dental?
Right, yeah. To try to get a three-year.
I think that's the next step.
The dental and then negotiate with, um, Medical Mutual about the three percent automatic increase the second and third year.
And then come back to you with it?
Yeah. And then I want more time to, I'll review this if I have any questions.
That's a lot. And are you going with a stop loss? Increasing the stop loss?
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll have options for you there. I brought them, but we, there's too much this morning.
Sure. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, what's the timeline on our renewal? Well, um, we don't really have a timeline on when you wanna renew, but we do have a timeline on when we want to get everything. There's a tremendous amount of work made order to, to get for opening enrollment and all of that in place by the end of the year. So I typically like to have everything done by September first. So, you know, the next step will be, we'll call it, we'll get some negotiations before we can get back in here. And then, and then we'll look at, to see what kind of plan changes. Once we can get a carrier, then we'll take a look at our specific plan and decide if there's any changes and that type thing that we wanna do.
I'm assuming, Susan, you'll, you'll keep it on our radar.
Yes.
And then you'll schedule to come back and.
I should.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, love.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, you too, Adam. See you, Doc.
Yeah, right.
Pardon?
Hi.
Oh, we're not past her.
Okay, just make sure.
Hi. Come in.
Thank you.
Do you want to look at resolution two?
I'm looking at one.
Do you have your packet, the create fund resolution?
Oh, yeah, for the...
I know the prosecutor's office reviewed it.
Board of Elections? Yeah, here.
Oh, the separate account?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See if the board is happy with the word. I just, it's, isn't written how we usually write them.
Oh, yeah.
I guess.
Okay. Oh, that's an add-on, isn't it?
Just write that if you want to give a thought.
Well, she's looking at that, we're here for sales tax proposals first, right?
You know, on this first university hospitals request, I would like to wait and see if that's going to be in the state budget, and we should know that July one, right?
Yeah.
Before we make, because there's a possibility that will be in there. So I'd like to wait on that, and the second one...
Let me just say, Vicki, too, on that, that it is in the budget in all the versions to date.
But we don't know if it's finalized, yeah.
Right, so that's, it's almost there, but we'll have a confirmation.
That's why I'm thinking it probably will be there.
I agree, I agree.
And on the second one, I know that listing, we were hoping to be able to make decisions now, but speaking for myself, I'd like to wait and see about this jail project. And I thought it said there was another three hundred thousand that came up to...
And the mattresses and whatnot.
For the supplies.
Right, right.
Well, and it's not, that was always, it's already, was included.
Oh, that wasn't a surprise?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
I was just seeking the appropriation to get stuff ordered, but we are appropriated out until the budget commission...
Okay.
Looks at and sees that we have additional money there that we can get budgeted.
And according to what we had agreed to...
There's not any? No, I bet. Oh.
No, we're, we were going to take, we had approximately eight hundred thousand, we were going to try to do four hundred this year for that. We really don't have a huge amount left for this year.
No.
After we funded SCAM and three hundred and fourteen thousand, like two...
If you want to leave four hundred set aside.
Yeah. So early, there's no decision you can make at now.
Well, I can, if...
We were at the end of the month...
I guess if we're not going to do them, these people would like to know, particularly the ones who are currently utilizing funds. The ones who have them, it's not as big a deal, but the ones who are currently utilizing funds, if they aren't going to give them, they need to be alerted at some point, so that they could get them in those rankings.
Are, are they talking about next year then, Todd, or are they talking about now?
They're talking about now.
Well, like your drug court person was, he was roughly hired late August, so if you are not renewing that funding, the courts need to figure out what to do with that position by mid-August. The Too Good, the Too Good contract, I think, was July fifteenth this year, so...
Should have renewed July, would, would have renewed July first?
Was that going to be a July first? I didn't know if they kept...
That's, that's the way they went, yeah.
You know, those people are without jobs, if we're not, they have been told they're not, but then they were given some hope of a maybe. So it's just, those are the two that have definitive answer of no, if that's what the answer is, whenever we know that, but...
I think the way it came out the last was, is we were going to, at the end of June, we'd know, so that we...
Reassess, yeah.
Let everybody know. And that's the only reason why we wanted to bring it up again. Should we notify people and then we're done? Until you have more money than you can decide you want to do something with.
Cause I think we should hold off, yeah. Cause until the jail project's done and we see exactly what our overrun's and, yeah. As far as the Too Good for Drugs program, you know, I, I was just told, the Royal Recovery Board has like a four million dollar carryover, that they could fund that. They weren't partially funding it to begin with, so... If they so desire to still keep that program in place, they do have the funding.
Okay. Okay, so do you want us to formulate a letter that can go out to those folks then, for you to sign?
Sooner than later.
Or do you want us to send it out? How do you want to do it? You want to send, you want to sign it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We'll get something, because I just feel like that will put the letters, you know, continually coming, and there were calls and things like that for us until we have more. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So I think that's it, right? You wait, we're going to wait until after the first?
After first, okay.
And then the sales and the experts send out letters, right? And then we just had the one resolution, Todd, did you have a question about the Board of Elections special fund for the grant money received from the Secretary of State?
I think it may need some edits just to put the verbiage in...
Which you normally have.
To similar contexts of what we typically use.
Okay.
I don't know if you want me to make those edits, if you want me to provide a draft of Board of Elections. The Board of Elections has started doing their own resolutions and having a prosecutor's office review them, which is why they're starting to look different from our typical formula.
Yeah.
That was their choice. So I don't, I don't know if you want to do it that, but that's my question.
Does it need to, I mean, can we wait on this? I feel like I read in here that they didn't need it...
Is there a timeline that this has to be done today or something, or what?
This is all the information that has been provided.
Yeah.
It's, it's highlighted, one of the highlights is when it has to be done, Todd, maybe let's, let me see that. I have to, like, have a little bit of time.
You, you have some problems with the verb, or not problems, but you just think it should be...
Everything that's there would be the same, it's just the ordering, some of their accounting accounts, their funds...
Period of performance, January thirty-first?
Just things like that.
And that's the time we have to have it done, and then he could get an extension, the later than...
Yeah, make, make your suggestions and give it to the Board of Elections and see how that goes, and then bring it back, Todd.
That one.
Yeah, because I think I pulled some of this stuff, because the Board of Elections asked me again to meet with their security persons, you know, and I pulled some of the stuff off the Secretary of State's to try to figure out what they were, what they were leaning towards. So I saw some dates on when I think they were talking about those things had to be done. I can work with Todd and give him that if there's any.
Okay.
Yeah, you know what, on the, the timeline, it says that, that they have, requires the Board to address and mitigate all high priority EISA items no later than January thirty-first, twenty-twenty. So as long, yeah, we...
We've got some time to...
I mean, we want to get it set up so they can figure out their priorities.
That was one of the bulletins from this Secretary of State, yeah. That's what I thought I was reading.
Well, before we split, I have the paperwork for the closing documents on the ABC railroad. And if you could sign them as we're sitting, you know, before you start with NDS, I would love to get these back in their hands, so that we can get our money and they transfer the deeds. One of the things that they did request was that we also, I need your, some form of your IDs to send with this documentation, your driver's license or passport, which I'm sure you don't carry, but...
No, yeah.
So if I could, I'll just start to...
Yeah, we'll sign that right now, Joe.
All right, that'd be great. This is a long time coming, and it's going to be so good, you have to find the job.
I know, I'm like, well, they keep having articles of the paper, and they can, wait, we have an entry, sorry.
Do we need a journal entry or anything?
No, this is just a normal, yeah, normal, because there was a resolution before selling it and all that business, but yeah.
I had a couple of questions on the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Consent agenda before we go, that's true too. Yeah, on the, Todd, what's, can you, we don't usually do all of these, like the one through eight.
We typically on Thursday do Thursday and Tuesdays bill them, but because you're not meeting next Thursday, we have to do this Thursday, next Tuesday, next Thursday, next Tuesday.
We are meeting Tuesday, though.
If, and if you want to pass those, then you could. We always fear those meetings getting canceled at the last minute if they're not normal, and so that's why we did this. If you want to delay all those other dates, though, and pass them on Tuesday, you want to, but they do need passed away.
Will you have items for Tuesday as well?
Not beyond those.
That'd be, so I don't think we're going to cancel Tuesday, but... So if there are things that you do need, make sure Tuesday, because when something crops up or people realize, oh, shoot, the fourth one. Sort of say, you know, people, people don't think of things that far.
And because these are bills generally, and janitors and stuff like that, if something bad happens and you do have to cancel because we don't have a quorum, then that gets, that holds all that stuff up. So in a, in a holiday week, it is a good thing to pass that ahead of time.
Okay. On resolution nine, um... Give it to the general one. The microphone, is this, is the shredding have anything to do with this treasure, the chainage?
I mean, salvage?
Yeah.
No, this is, this is five hundred or so boxes that we were holding of the woodlands when we had the nursing home, and they can be destroyed now, which would plenty some room for him.
Okay.
So that's why we were asking to have that done out. Plus now we realize that we can't take those kinds of things, so that was a cost that we got proposals on.
Okay. Was this mental health contract a...
That's your three hundred and fourteen.
That's the sales tax proposals.
The, yeah, schools, that.
Okay, yeah, got it.
What, thank you, I forgot what those people are called, counsel, case...
They're case managers, yeah. Okay. Something funky is going on with someone's printer on these, did you guys see that?
Yeah, Amy's printer's like, some leaked letters out everywhere.
I know, I was like, wait.
On the screen, it's all there, but on the printer, it's not, I think she needs a new driver.
You know, I've never seen anything like that, and, and misplacing the letters.
I know, it's odd.
I think you've got gremlins in there.
In the, on resolution ten, the dog kennel...
That would be for this truck if you guys are approving that purchase.
So it is that?
Well, this is the budget, you would still have a chance to deny the...
The resolution of necessities coming next Tuesday.
That's what really allows the purchase to proceed. The key is, since you're not coming next Thursday, I want to this in now, so if you do pass that, I'm ready to go with it.
And you're in agreement with purchasing that, correct? That's what he said.
The Board wanted each of us to come to it individually, so you could consider it, so that's what we advised Dave to do. I don't have, he has the money to do it.
Well, we were talking, I talked to him about that and asked if he had talked to you guys about Enterprise, and he said that he had.
He got a quote, Todd had gotten a quote for him.
And that this, this was the best course of action, is that...
Quotes from Enterprise were larger?
This is where, and, and you're going to get this a lot over the next few years, to the individual departments, which Dave is his own fund as well. Purchasing and keeping a vehicle still makes sense to them. In the grander picture of our volume, we don't know yet how that works out, and so we don't have really answers for you. If all you're looking at is the dog and kennel fund, and all you're looking is the fact that Dave needs a car, then yes, for him to purchase it makes sense just for him. Does it make sense for the county as a whole to have some on leases and some on purchases, probably? What does that mix, we're not quite sure yet.
And how long do you think, a year, two years?
It's going to take, well, the real key is the turnback, which is going to be three or four years away.
Okay.
You know, we just have their projections, which we'll tell you with a grain of salt, and also our conversations with other counties. But to be honest, a lot of this is fairly new, and fairly new on this, over the last ten years.
Sure.
The counties are, now the states have been doing it for quite a while, probably closer to fifteen or twenty.
Okay. So wouldn't, wouldn't it be an immediate savings to him? Rather than what you're saying for him right now, it makes sense?
Well, per year, yes. Per, in other words, per year, he'll be spending four thousand on a lease versus thirty thousand on ownership. But then, in the long term, if he's going to keep this vehicle for the full eight or nine years, I mean typically, typically his vehicle for twelve years, then owning it outright makes more sense for him. That's, that's where you get that dichotomy. In his mind, he's not going to turn this vehicle back in, he's going to keep it for, for a long time.
Sure.
And that's why to him, it does make sense to purchase, and if we are going to keep this vehicle for a long time, it does make sense to purchase. And there are a few vehicles, like the weights and measurement truck, that we modify significantly enough that we probably should purchase those. There's other vehicles, you know, there's dog wardens all over the state that want to lease a new vehicle, it's possible we could get a good turning value on this truck. For now, I would say we're okay purchasing it.
Okay.
Until we have better information. But I will say, as, as we begin these purchases, you're going to get a lot of people coming saying, well, I don't want to pay this interest rate, I don't want to pay these user fees.
Yeah.
I want to just purchase outright and keep the vehicle ten years, in which case, we're right where we were, in which case, we're not.
But I guess...
Well, that's why I keep trying, that's why I keep trying to bring it up when we do a vehicle.
But I guess it depends, and you're right to bring it up, but I guess it depends on can that department keep the vehicle ten, twelve years? Because obviously the sheriff cannot.
No.
And so therefore we need a lease there.
In my mind, he was the prime one, we needed the lease or the Enterprise for because of the mileage and stuff, but like you said, especially, like, the dog warding has to be specially outfitted and stuff. To me, it doesn't seem like...
We're trying to buy, we're trying to buy the, the backend where they, they keep the dogs generically, so that it can be moved from a model to a model, but it's hard, yeah.
Now, this vehicle's not being outfitted with anything, basically, this is just a Tahoe, which would have good resale.
But they will put, they will put one of those things on the back.
No, they're just going to put...
Oh, I thought he was.
He's going to put an internal cage.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anyway, it, it's difficult, we don't have really good answers. It may be four years from now, we're like, oh, we should have done this, in which case we can start at that point. Or it may be in four years, we're like, oh, we're glad we did these few, like, we're going to learn as we go.
So we have to take this case by case, I think.
Yeah, and some of the departments, like the ones that we've already are leasing for, that are in the process of maybe, I think, we're going to see that those ones, we will be able to turn around and get a good cost on, because the mileage doesn't get as high on those.
Well, the other thing I do going to have to consider, by increasing our volume, we get better price overall. It's possible, though, that Dave himself doesn't benefit from that, because let's say he turned this car in. It's possible just on that one car, he doesn't get a significant savings, does that make sense? But because of that car, they're building towards a volume where others are getting discount. So again, you're going to have these situations where to the individual fund, the outlook is different than the picture as a whole. And even if Dave is breaking even or losing a little bit, does it still make sense to have him included? Those are the decisions you're going to have to start making as to whether these independent funds still need to participate, so that the county as a whole maintains a certain level of presence with Enterprise and we get their...
And you know what, what was our effective date with Enterprise?
We don't have that information either.
To see our one-year analysis of...
One year is coming up, I mean, two months, in November.
Is it November?
I once, we...
I thought it was...
Right, right after we closed the motor pool.
Well, yeah, I thought it was later, though, for some reason.
Actually, yeah, we were delayed twelve, so it was Sunday.
No, it was almost, yeah, November, because it was before the election, I remember. It was after the election that it went into effect, so we've still got some time to see how it's going to...
Well, we closed the motor pool at the end of October.
Yep.
And, and...
This was supposed to start...
Right after that.
Yep.
That was when everything was signed.
Joanne, on these documents for the railroad, can I see, I, I just want to see the contract, original contract, the December contract for the purchase of this. I just want to match the settlement statement to the contract, yeah.
You're looking for the settlement statement, you said? Or no, what, what are you looking for?
The contract, where we agreed to, it was dated December...
The selling?
Yeah.
Okay, were the, when the bid was signed, you mean?
Yeah, or what?
Okay.
Did you check that, Joanne?
Did I look at it? No, because it was signed by everybody and we were moving on, it was not even there.
Yeah, it's December thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, it's a purchase agreement. Yeah, I just want to check it before I sign them, so...
I know it's twenty-five thousand.
No, I know that, I'm looking at the others, so...
Sure, I'm not sure we agree to this, so...
Okay. I think it was just a flag.
Will you, once you sign those, then hold them up here, and then I'll need a copy of your driver's licenses, so that I can send everything back now?
Yeah, okay.
I will, uh, did, did you have anything more in consent?
I do, yeah, on the, on ten, with the vehicle maintenance, is that Enterprise there?
Well, those, those are the ones, well, those, ten?
How does that...
How does that?
Amendment to the non-genderal vehicle maintenance, I'm sorry, central vehicle maintenance.
Oh, that, um, okay, that, that really is meaningless. Um, originally, we were wondering whether we were going to do charge backs or expense corrections because we didn't know we budgeted it to be able to do charge backs. We're doing expense corrections, which just means we have excess budget. Um, so that's just, that's an adjustment now that we understand our actual way we're doing it. Um, it doesn't have any bearing on actual expenses or anything like that.
Okay.
Oh, the central vehicle maintenance.
Yeah, those reductions.
Okay. Hold on one sec. I did, I did take a note on my master. On sixteen, resolution sixteen, which is the, uh, sewer maintenance program, what is the projected budget on that? Do you remember?
Is the estimate of cost, does she have it listed in the resolution by chance?
Oh, resolution. Does she? I don't think she did.
Sixteen.
I know she talked about it. I just wondered if you.
No.
And that it isn't.
It's not in here.
Okay, and it fits within their, we asked them specifically and it fits within their budget. I just.
Correct.
It's a, it's a little bit larger of an item.
I probably have it sitting right on my desk because we just met.
Are we talking about?
Johnny, go grab it real quick.
Are we talking about sixteen?
Yeah.
Sixteen, yeah.
Well, this is to put it out to bid.
Yeah, there, there should be a, a cost, an estimate though on their, they just don't put it in their resolution.
That was it.
Listed, but you know, there are those in that information, but it doesn't say how much.
Actually, they don't have it on here, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I know I have the number. I just, reading through this, I'm just trying to remember. How much are we talking about here? But it's okay. I have it somewhere too. From a past public discussion of it, so.
Okay.
That was all I had.
Okay. I have a question, Joanne. On our add-on for resolution for the Edinburgh auction.
Yes.
Which departments are these trucks coming from? Or are they, they all, they from a variety of them?
Yeah.
Um, I can probably tell you. Let me just look at it. It was like an add-on for a.
Okay, the GMC pickup truck was the sheriff.
Okay.
The Chevy van was the old mail truck. Two of the Ford Focuses was for the juvenile court and one was the municipal court.
Okay.
I've seen them so many times, I said I can embed it in my head now for.
You've got the VIN numbers memorized, right, Joanne?
Settle, well, Mark, you know, we can't even drive there. We have to have tow to get them done, but we wanna get them out of our, get off, off the insurance list and get whatever we can out of them.
Sure.
Something's better than nothing, right?
That's exactly right.
Thank you guys.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
Are you folks?
Jen, how are you? I've been seeing you for so long.
Yeah. Sabrina, I'll find that, I'll, I'll email it to you, okay?
Yeah, yeah, just.
Okay.
It wasn't me.
Hi.
Hi, Debbie.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
It's been a while.
No.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay, good. You guys, you have the letter. Um, I'm Jen with Neighborhood Development Services and as you know, we administer revolving loan funds. Um, we are here today, I have Deb from the Village of Wyndham to ask for funding from your CDDG housing RLF to do some repairs to the Wyndham Community Center. Um, we did have an in-house staff budget. I know the letter says about three hundred thousand, but it actually is closer to two hundred thousand and that includes the requiring prevailing wage. Um, that'll do all of the improvements that are needed for both health and safety and hopefully turn it into something that they can use and can generate some more revenue for the village. Um, the RLF currently has about three hundred and thirty thousand, so you won't be expending all of it if you do choose to fund this. And we have talked to the state and it's considered for the national objective, it would be an area-wide LMI. So it does meet their standards in order to move forward with it.
And how much did you spend on the fund? About three hundred and three?
It's about three thirty.
Okay.
So there's additional there. Um, the one thing I will say about the RLF is the state's really pushing to have those spent down. They don't want to see the larger budget amounts sitting there, um, especially when you're going for your competitive grants like your CHIPS and that sort of thing.
And there would a lot of those.
Losing that money, that's for sure.
The request would actually be based on, um, the staff budget and then what the actual bid would come in for. Um, but the amount right now, based on our staff budget, is two hundred and three thousand.
Two hundred and three?
Yeah, so it's less than the.
So three hundred to three twenty?
Yeah.
You're asking for a hundred percent funding, the village is not contributing to which.
Not at the time. The village has some, a contract right now that they are paying for and they're doing some of the improvements already that they've started. Um, but we couldn't use this money towards that because with the environmental review process, you can't start the work ahead of time. So they already have, um, a couple of contracts that they're doing some of this major safety items with already.
So, so Mayor, what are you guys working on now? Just so that we know, what are some of the contracts are, what, what issues are you guys addressing now before?
Two of the porches on the east end and the, and the west wing.
Okay.
Um, some siding on the front of the building, seven windows. I believe we have a contract for, um, forty-two thousand dollars with Dan Finney. And then we also have a contract with a painter for inside the building because we have some, um, chipping and flaking in the main room. I believe that contract is thirty-five hundred dollars. Yeah, so the village has that money to put in.
So, so what exactly will this funding be for?
This is what we're, um, and I don't know if you guys, I brought copies. I don't know if you know the copy of the, um, estimate that we did to show the improvements that we're looking at.
When is the proposed payback coming?
That would be determined, um, by the commissioners if it would be a grant or if they want to have it revolved back.
You don't have any suggestions on it?
I don't, I could, yeah, not with this request, um, but that is something that we could obviously, we've definitely come up with before we did the final.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it is like a revolving loan.
It's a revolving loan fund, yeah. Um, most of the time with the CDDG housing, it gets prepaid back with the CHIP program. Um, somebody sells their house and that's when the loan hits in. And so that's when it gets paid back on the housing side of it.
Yeah, it gets on the housing side, but then on the.
On this one, it would have to be determined. I know with like the, um, economic development, it's based on what income it would gain and stuff. So I'm not sure if this'll, how much income this will generate immediately. So it would just be something that we would kind of need to talk about and figure out if there was some, a way to make sure it got revolved back.
And here it has exterior, it has vinyl siding. Is this different from?
Yes.
Don't worry.
The, the money that we could afford to pay was only going the front of the building. There are two sides, there's the back. Um, there's a lot more siding to purchase using that one. It's a big deal.
All right. So in the past, and Todd, you might remember this, we know, Jen, what have we done as far as payback?
I know, like for the movie theater, you know, the state required, we had to have a payback.
A lot of times, we put the caveat of sale or refinance. This being a governmental facility, you're probably not going to see that. Um, so the question becomes, do you still put it on with the understanding that you're never gonna get the money? Or do you ask for some type of annual payment? There is an indication that they're using it to increase their revenue flows. Um, I, I mean, those are all options the commissioners have. Or you can grant it all. Um, and it's a tyranny.
That's what we're hoping.
It's for the grant.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would still leave us about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
This is the same pool of money from which Oakwood, Chin, and all those would be coming to you for as well.
Right. And as an update on that, I know that the CHIP staff did send out applications to the fifty-eight homeowners in there. We got back eight. And of the eight, six income qualified for the CHIP program, which means that we could use that money to help them. Um, but right now, the pipe is in and they're waiting on the EPA to actually approve it before anybody can tie in. So.
How much are, are the estimated costs for each of it?
For each house? Um, the best guess estimate we have right now is we're looking at about fifty feet, um, from the house to tie it in. So based on that, it's about forty-five hundred to five thousand for the actual work. And then the additional would be, um, whatever the tap-in fees are. And as of right now, nobody knows what those are gonna be.
But that's just for the sewer side. These people also have to comply the rest of their house.
Right, right. But that would be, those would be used with the CHIP funds too. So.
Each project could be twenty-five, thirty-five.
Total, for the total house, but that would include, that would be the CHIP funds as well.
And you said out of eight, six of them?
Out of eight, only six income qualified. And we didn't, out of fifty-eight apps, we don't get eight back. So.
But that, that one would be, what, current detail?
But we do have the CHIP funding. Yeah, actually, right now, two of the people are on the waiting list where timing, they could potentially get the current CHIP funding for their houses.
And how much do we have in the current CHIP funding?
That I don't know. But I do know that they're available to do those two houses. The only issue is we couldn't do this portion of it because until the EPA blesses the pipe, nobody can do anything. Um, I do know that there is, there can be some health department money available, but once again, nobody can apply for the health department money until it's tied in, until the pipe's blessed and ready to go.
And then the regional planning has some funds too. There's like several.
I know that they have in the past, um, and what they have available at this point.
There's, no, it's the best industry right there.
You know, Jen, I think I've lost something here. It's saying we want to increase from three hundred to three twenty-five to get two oh three is needed. So.
We actually, the three hundred in the letter was determined before we sent out our staff to actually meet the requirement in that prevailing wage. So the two hundred and three is about what would be needed.
Okay.
So not the full of the three.
So you're not increasing the three hundred to three twenty-five?
Yeah, no, what we're requesting today is the two hundred and approximately two oh three.
Okay.
And that obviously would be based on what the bid amount came in at, but based on our staff budget.
Okay. Okay. Did we have anything in advance on this?
No.
Okay.
No. So, so I think we need to hash this over and then get back.
Yes.
I guess, yeah. The gear, are you okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a timeline?
Yeah. ASAP. Yeah, ASAP because there are, um, a couple of items on here. There's a sidewalk I know that's heaving, so that's a trip hazard. There's another, um, front porch that also he's done. So there are a couple of major safety hazards. There's some electrical concerns. So as soon as possible, just because.
Are those actual bids or those are just yours?
These are just staff, and yes, staff estimate.
So we're not holding up any bid prices?
Yes, there's no bid prices. There's nothing. Um, because it's the county funding, it actually would have to go through the county bid process.
Jen, and what would be very helpful for me is how you arrived at that two oh three for each, I mean, for the total of these projects.
Okay, I can ask.
If you could give us a breakdown for what.
Yep, I can have, I can read that from Brad.
Each of these, in case we don't fund it all, but fund some.
Right. Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, that would.
That would be very helpful.
Okay. Is there anything else that you want me to take back in?
Nothing.
Just the breakdown of each.
Here.
I may call you separately just to get some background on this fund and.
Absolutely.
Historical, just so I know a little bit more and I can make a.
Yep.
Form decision. But this is helpful. I'm glad you came in.
Are you aware of the fact that this was a building that was built when they built the ammunition plant? So this is a nineteen forty-two, twenty-four hour daycare center. I mean, it's been in the community a long time. Actually, I'm going to try to see if I can get it declared some kind of a historical, yeah, because it's, it's, you know.
Make it.
Significant to the community.
Sometimes adds to your cost.
Yeah.
It's a blessing at a person's time.
Maintain it a certain way.
Well, okay, then maybe I won't do that.
Wait, wait till I.
Yeah, wait till you.
Wait till you.
Okay, all right.
Super qualified.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Do you need one or?
Yeah.
I'll just take it.
Yeah, cause it's changed since.
How's it going, Jen? Well, I like it.
Good.
You get locked up from the.
I just, I just, I kind of, yeah, depending how you.
Well, then I'll just email me and say call me.
Yeah, I normally just cost these years out. I'm like.
Yeah, yell myself on there too, so feel free.
Thanks, Jen.
You're welcome. It's good seeing you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Both of you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye, Deb.
Okay, see you later.
Okay. Almost a public comment, fifteen minutes.
I'll bring it. And again, it hasn't been mentioned by this board, but past boards have expressed the frustration with, you have to spend the revolvers, but there's never any projects. But then you award a project, like if, let's say you award this two hundred thousand dollars, you get other trustees coming saying, we didn't even know there was money. We, we, so it just, again, to give you that on your radio in terms of, that doesn't affect whether yes or no this project, but the whole process of.
Yeah.
You know, how, how do communities have access to these revolving?
We have talked to them about that.
And they tell you everything's fine, but that isn't what you're hearing on the other end. And that's why I keep bringing up you.
It's the lack of communication, is that it, Todd? I mean.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's one thing to say, yeah, we have money cut, those when you need it. It's another thing to say, on April first, we want your proposals and we're gonna evaluate the best ones. I think that's what people are waiting for.
Yeah.
And that isn't necessarily what happens with this money.
What happens with this.
But again, two hundred thousand dollars, I bet there's a lot of communities who could have found siding and sidewalks and all those type of things if they'd known it was available.
Right.
And that's all I'm gonna.
Well, and another thing that we need, we've talked about before is, is giving this information ahead of time so we can, okay, and that never happens. And then I feel like we get put on the spot because then they bring in the, the prospective project person and it makes it awkward for us.
Well, it's hard to evaluate things in isolation. It's nice to have a list and say, no, we wanna do this one, this one, this one, because we're the best of the group that we've seen. So.
Well, and it seems to, when we schedule that, we could maybe try to.
We've encouraged that before though, Ken.
Really?
So, but it wouldn't hurt to reiterate. I mean, say it again, truly.
Because we really shouldn't be looking at, like, this is way off. I mean, you're looking at three hundred and three and a quarter.
Yeah, well, that's where I got them too.
And then it's down to two oh three. And like I said, it, it would have been nice to have the breakdown of costs so that if we do elect this, fund some, not all.
Yeah.
You know? And then another thing is, is those are options as the administrator for us. You know, it would have been nice to have the options of, what if we did want some You know, it would've been nice to have the options of, what if we did want some type of a payback? I mean, wh- what would they qualify to do, or whatever? And I'm not saying, you know, that's the route we should go, or whatever, but it's always nice to have options for us.
Do you want this brought back at a certain time? Do you want to tell us when you're gonna discuss it? This, this is that fuzzy area of how do we proceed with this?
Yeah, well, when do we do it?
She's saying need it as soon as possible, but you're out next week, right?
Yeah.
So I think we should put it on the radar. That'll give you time to talk to Jen and, and understand that maybe...
Well, you know, if, if you would want to do this this week, if you both, we could have a conference call, you wanna do that?
I think it's too soon.
Okay.
It's just the end of the week after.
I just didn't wanna hold it up if you were wanting to move with it.
And see, and that's the other thing, they don't give us any time, it's like, oh, we have to have this right away. I, I don't like that, because, you know, we need to research this. Because our next meeting's only a couple of business days away, next week's a holiday week.
That's true.
Yeah, no, I think the following week would be fine.
Okay.
So bring it to the next meeting, next Thursday meeting, which is two Thursdays.
And if we wouldn't have had you sitting here, we wouldn't have known that Chen allotment could possibly, and it's a big one coming our way.
Well, that's, we're in this dichotomy now, you have too much money, you really do need to spend it.
But...
If you just spend it on whatever's there, do you have a price? Because we do know we have some...
I can't imagine us having too much money.
We do have some big ones that are coming, and that's... On the other hand, the more you spend, the more you can possibly get, it's...
But then you never know.
Yeah.
You know, we're not guaranteed anything.
Guaranteed, yeah.
But we do know what we have now.
Right, we got this in front of us.
There's one on pass the consent and the journal entry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, does the consent agenda, we have to add the second item? These kids add our separate, right? And we're only adding the second one, correct?
Yeah, we're only gonna do the rest, the auction item.
Sale of equipment.
Yeah, the auction item. We, we held on the Board of Elections.
Okay. What about this, our incomplete, too, for adult probation?
Yeah.
That was locked in yesterday.
Yeah, and that's just our...
We need to get this out.
Supply for that grant.
Right, down there.